Okay, great. We're here tonight. This is Tuesday, February four, two thousand twenty-five. And we have a quorum with our two alternates here as well. So is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we have two alternate members joining us. Dick Brown out and Jennifer Bergen. Jennifer's new. This is her first meeting. So we hope she lasts after this. And we have one item this evening. This is the informal appearance before the board. This is the C.T. Homes LLC, four fifty-six and four sixty-two Armagh Road. This is the application for a preliminary subdivision plan approval. Application for a stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control and tree removal permit for construction of a four lot subdivision.
Good evening.
Hi Ralph.
How you doing?
For the record, Ralph Alvin Zetti, the engineer for the project. So it has a little bit of history on it. Back in, I think it was August, we submitted a four lot plan, zoning compliant, two driveways, two houses per driveway. The board and/or planner asked us to look at doing a conservation subdivision, which would mean we would prove out the number of lots in a conventional subdivision and then pivot to the same number of lots with a conservation subdivision with reduced zoning requirements. We produced this plan with a town road cul-de-sac, four lots. And the planning department has indicated this lot probably would not pass because the house is within the buffer.
So that's the conventional that we just received in our packets right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, we would like to pivot. I mean, the goal is still a four lot subdivision. We would like to use this plan that was submitted in August with a lot of information as our conventional.
Ralph, that was the second plan you guys submitted after you came to us with one.
Correct.
We had a lot of dialogue and you came back with that revised.
We came, we, the initial, so further going back, we had, we had four lots with one driveway, which was not preferred. Then we had two alternates that were like this, and this was the preferred alternate.
Correct.
And then we started looking at the conservation subdivision. So we'd like to use that as our conventional. And then we'd like to pivot to this plan, which is four lots, a common driveway. This was submitted with the package. The lots have reduced zoning setbacks and, and, uh, it, there is a matrix set that I have prepared tonight. Sabrina's on, she can pull it up. I also have copies I can, I can hand out.
Except the one that we have in our packets?
Well, that, that matrix there compares this plan
Right.
to the cul-de-sac plan.
Oh.
Now, the one that I have here compares this plan to the conservation plan. I know you have not seen the matrix, but I can pass them out and.
It's a great movie.
What's that?
It was a great movie.
Um, the trees are less, the luminance disturbance is less. Basically, everything is less across the board.
Yeah, so the conservation subdivision does exactly what the policy behind that does.
Correct.
Reduces all these environmental impacts.
Correct, and it, it creates more of like a neighborhood. And it would, this entire hatched area would be, would be restricted conservation easement that nothing can happen. And I know there is an adjoining park above, so it kind of makes sense. I can pass out the matrix if you want. Sabrina can pull it up. I can answer questions.
Well, we'll certainly take a look at that. I think, I think what we should do here is try to move you forward and get you to your preferred program and, and, and move you forward. So my understanding is, for background for the board, a conservation subdivision enables us to achieve certain environmental goals. You know, usually we reduce wetland, buffer, tree clearing, and steep slope issues. Clearing, grading, et cetera, cut and fill, all different kinds of impacts that we, we look at and we're concerned with. But this enables us, often by changing some of the zoning requirements, basically clustering the homes closer together and preserving more open, open land. I mean, that's the, the public policy behind it. So what, in order to do that, what we have traditionally done, I think, consistent with the code, is we've asked applicants to prove out a conventional layout for the lot number that they are looking to achieve. We've had lots of history on this over the years, you know, big giant subdivisions, et cetera. So what we have been asking or have asked the applicant to do is, ultimately, they want to end up with four lots here, four homes, four home sites. Prove it out conventionally. The problem that we had with the one that was the conventional in our packet was that one of the lots, I think it's lot one, is it Ralph? I may have it wrong, whatever that, that lot is.
Yeah, you're correct.
Yep. There were problems with that in that, I think all of the construction was proposed to be within the wetland buffer. So while we look at those kinds of things and, you know, when there's a real need, when it's starting out that way, normally we really don't look at it and, you know, consider it to be approvable at that point. The minor issues we've talked about, I know sightlines on some of these, and we, we understand that somehow, some way you'll be able to take care of those and remedy those. So what we have here is the proposal that we saw last fall. Even though it has common driveways, it still is a conventional layout that in theory could be approvable. It's probably, I guess it's not even necessarily preferable from the standpoint of the applicant, maybe it is, I don't know. But probably, I'm speaking unfortunately too much for other people, but probably is not something that the board would want to see for this parcel. So probably a conservation development is what we would like to see. So if in fact, and we have to hear from Sabrina and Bob and Dennis and John on this, if in fact this is a so-called approvable four lot conventional subdivision, then it seems to me that the applicant has met that regulatory hurdle. And then we can consider, we have a lot of discretion under conservation developments to do a lot of different things to reduce zoning requirements. And we can be very, very flexible with an applicant to help them get what they need and also to preserve as much property as possible. So that's a long winded explanation of what we're trying to do here tonight. We had a lot of these in the nineties and early two thousands when the town was still, saw a lot of development. So we haven't seen it for a while. But that, that's it. So I guess what I'll do is Sabrina, I'll turn it to you in terms of your comments and thoughts, and then Bob and Dennis and John, and we'll go from there.
Um, you know, the planning board previously had asked the applicant to utilize a conventional subdivision plan using one curb cut and a town roadway with a cul-de-sac. The applicant did that. They demonstrated four lots off of that common driveway, but one of the lots was located within the wetland buffer. The actual landscape of the house and septic system in the wetland buffer. So, um, you know, I didn't think that that would work. Today, we actually had extensive conversation with the applicant and followed up with conversations with legal counsel regarding the initial lot that the applicant had submitted with the two common driveways and the four homes. Two of the homes off of each common driveway. Ralph, do you have that in front of you?
I do, yes.
Okay, so that was a plan that we revisited today. And the question we asked counsel to address is, is that a conventional subdivision? It is not a town roadway with a cul-de-sac as we directed the applicant to perform last time. But I don't know, John, if you want to weigh in on that. I know we had discussion at your last meeting as to whether or not that would meet the standards of a conventional subdivision. And so, you know, we need to clarify that in order for the applicant to move forward.
Yeah, and under my interpretation of the code, it permits common driveways as long as there's proper access and frontage. And I, I don't see any prohibition to these two common driveways as a conventional subdivision, as part of a conventional subdivision application. So I see no barrier to that as being considered the conventional subdivision plan.
So in theory, they would be approvable.
Approvable on that point, yes.
Yes, okay.
The, the, the two common driveways is not a bar to a conventional subdivision.
Right, and to remind folks, when we have a conventional layout, we are really bound by all the zoning requirements. We can't change those unless it goes to the ZPA. So if we can't do that, we can do that under the conservation development. So anyway.
So carrying forward, the applicant would need to prepare a comparison between this conventional subdivision and a conservation subdivision. And Ralph, did you do that?
I did, I did. I emailed it to you. I also have copies that I can pass out.
Yeah, I, I have it, but it says five lot on it. Did you do five lots?
Yeah.
It is five lot. Well, only because the conservation lot stands on its own. Now, we don't have to do it that way. We can do an easement out so then it'll only stay at four lot. It's, it's however the town would like it. That, that fifth lot is not a building.
Right.
It's not a building lot. It's not a building lot.
Right, yeah, it's not a building. Right, exactly right. Exactly.
Okay, so I'm sharing on my screen the matrix that was done today for comparison purposes. And the ultimate goal tonight, I believe, is for the planning board to direct the applicant to either go with the conventional with the two common driveways and the four houses or the conservation subdivision with the four houses. Just kind of thinking ahead, the next step would be for the planning board to issue a notice of intent to be lead agency. This is an unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. But we would need a full EAF on whichever plan the planning board would like the applicant to implement.
Um, we, we did observe that there's potentially one issue. And I'm not so sure the board is prepared to, to move on this and waive this requirement. When we look at your roadway and we start looking at the development coverage, lots three and four are going to be saddled with a significant amount of development because of the roadway. They're going to receive a pro rata share on there. So when you start calculating the, the development, it's going to be fairly significant and, and it could be, we don't know. It may exceed what, what the zoning is for that. Now, in some areas, obviously, we're, we're very eager to, to work with folks, it seems to me, on conservation. But I'm, I'm not so sure that we would bend on the coverage issue. If that becomes an issue, I don't know if we have that, that information yet.
We would need, we would need, Ralph, we would need new coverage calculation worksheets. And there's a specific formula that needs to be adhered to for common driveways, where you proportion the driveway for all of the lots that share that driveway. Um, and, and so we'd have to do those calc, we need to see those calculations to see where you fall within the coverage requirements of the project.
No, not, not an issue. When you say that there's, there might be an issue, were you talking about the conservation subdivision?
Yes, yeah, conservation, yeah. So one of the issues I really wanted to ask you, and then we'll take comments from Bob and Dennis, et cetera, is on your conservation subdivision, because of that one issue, yeah, if you could hold that up, and I think Canaan would like, Canaan would like to see that.
Thank you.
Yep, so it's these two lots here.
Ah, got it.
Because they're going to get hit with all that roadway development and the population.
Well, for the board's information, just to give you a sense, they're not going to be hit with the entire length only. The lot, the, the length of the property would be only, it would be divided by the number of homes on that road.
So in any event, I, I wanted to ask the applicant if, and I think to the extent that Bob has to give us support on this. I'm, I'm wondering if, again, a single road cut and you have your conventional that you showed us tonight. But I'm wondering if, yep, if you could hold that up. I'm wondering if, under a conservation development, we could do something similar. Shorten the road, maybe make the road more narrow. I think we can do that under conservation. And you have four homes around a small cul-de-sac driveway or, or whatever, we call it, not a roadway. And pulling the, all the houses out of there, we can get them closer together. It seems to me that that would create a real little neighborhood, a little pocket, which would be terrific for families, for you guys for marketing. I think it would be preferable to this thing where the road goes across the, the front yards of these homes.
Do you mean pull the cul-de-sac down to the intersection of like the four lots?
Yes, exactly right, exactly.
So the cul-de-sac goes half the way back?
Yep.
Yeah, because the whole, I was wondering that myself.
And the lots could be sliced off, Ralph, you know, pie shape. We can, we can reduce the frontage requirements. And you have, I think now, a nice, you could have a nice little subdivision there that's a wholly owned, wholly owned, wholly, I can't talk anymore.
And that would become a public road.
Thank you.
Right?
No, no, I don't think it would be less, no.
No, that, that would still be a private district.
It's like a neighborhood, little, little.
And we could, we could, we could bend the rules on that, I think. And Bob has to tell us how much we can do on roadways, but I think we can narrow it from the.
So you're saying the cul-de, the two houses can be literally on the cul-de-sac? So it doesn't even have to go back that far?
Exactly right.
Yeah, the cul-de-sac could go halfway back.
Yep.
I can, I can, I can look at this.
Yeah, right there.
I don't want to say I can or can't do it on the fly here. There are requirements as far as the, the slope in. And right now, this kind of drops pretty quickly. So if I were to end the cul-de-sac here, let's say, there'd probably be a significant amount of fill in that area. But I, I will look at it.
Yeah, I mean, is it something that you and your, and your clients would, would entertain as, as, as a preferable alternative to all this stuff?
Mine is right here. I didn't introduce Greg Altshuler.
Right here.
How you doing guys? It's a pleasure meeting you.
Ralph, is there wetland, is there wetlands in that one lot though? Can we even?
This is the wetland lot.
I think the issue is that the land drops off quite dramatically.
Yep, yes, yep.
So the amount of fill which would be required here is, could be extraordinary.
Maybe it's not all the way there, right? Like it could be halfway between, between the two.
Maybe we're thinking this over the, over.
Over this thing?
Over this one.
The driveways go across all these in the front here?
I was actually going to ask, could this become and just loop and that becomes a town road? And then you have just the four houses off a town road and it loops. And then it makes it easier for right turns and left turns because it lets people have a.
Could be. I don't know what the, what Bob's thoughts are on curb cuts and DOT.
Another curb cut.
Oh, Bob will definitely tell us.
Yes, yes. So that's, that's one of the issues, I think, yeah.
It definitely has a, has a good neighborhood sort of feel that this doesn't give you, but yeah.
Yeah, this is.
Oh, that's a, that's a cluster that could be a little micro neighborhood.
Yes.
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
Question, on this one here that we, that I can't see.
This one?
No, this one. If we're looking at that, you have three driveways at a certain distance, and then you have a fourth one, you know, that's going up, going up a hill or going down a gully, I guess, going down.
This is going down.
Yeah, so that's extra money for that owner or so. And it's, it's, it's kind of like another hill down. And one of the issues here is, we certainly have hills and gullies and everything else. Nice, I think this one over here where they're, where they're, you know, all lined up, they still have a nice backyard and everything like that.
True.
Uh, you know, so that family could be there. And the, the only thing, I guess, with the road is, how do you end it?
I like getting it out.
Yeah.
There.
Is there another way out?
Yeah, if you get it out, then it just cleans up everything, a lot.
So now, you're talking another curb cut?
Maybe.
Possibly.
We haven't gotten past the assistant town engineer in this. Yeah, so Bob, do you want to weigh in with your comments and thoughts?
I'm not quite sure what plane you're talking about because I can't see anything you're speaking on.
That's the beauty of this conversation.
And it's kind of hard for me to comment on something I can't see.
We don't have, Sabrina, I believe, has a computer or?
You do. Uh, Sabrina may have it.
We're, we're looking at the conservation.
Sure, well, which, you're looking at the conservation?
You're looking at the conservation?
Yes.
Yes, and we're wondering, we're wondering if the driveway didn't dead end, if it looped back to one twenty-eight and if that actually helps with traffic because it'd be two curb cuts.
Yep, that's it.
And one might be more preferable for heading north or one might be more preferable for heading south on one twenty-eight based on line of sight.
Do you want to put a cul-de-sac in the middle of the lot?
No, no, not, not a cul-de-sac. We want to make, we want to take another, take, yeah, there you go. Who's ever doing that in blue? Perfect.
I am.
That's a weird thing.
I'm going to radio you.
Something like that.
Some version of that, yep.
Yeah, that way you have like a little loop and it might make it easier for traffic flow in and out.
Well, that's going to be predicated by the sideline analysis that they do. That's going to dictate where you can put those curb cuts because everyone knows. People on that road do about seventy miles an hour. And that's going to create, require quite a bit of site distance. And so really the site analysis they do, the eighty-fifth percentile is going to dictate where that curb cut's going to be and where, if they're going to even be two there at all.
Yes, agreed.
So I, I can't speak on it until it's done.
Bob, is it something that you think that DOT would be amenable to?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
I don't see why not, but you know, the sideline will be very critical. Because I'm certain you're going to have to show intersection stopping site distance as well along with stopping site distance. And intersection site distance is much more, it's more than, much greater. So Ralph will have to do that. Rob, would you be able to do the eighty-fifth percentile study? You're going to have to get some traffic PTO.
We get a traffic person to do it.
Yeah, that would, that would dictate where it's going to go, quite honestly.
And would that let Ralph get rid of the hammerheads on the loop road?
Yes.
Well, that's really what it.
Absolutely. So it would, it would serve a dual purpose.
Would you want to make that a, a town road, dedicate a town road? At that point, you can.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, we'll see what the applicant has to say and we'll see what the, you guys have to say, what the preference is.
Well, we have to be careful because a town road requires certain standards that may make this no longer a conservation subdivision comparison.
Yeah, a town road, problem with a town road, you have minimum centerline radius,
Sure.
which is one seventy-five. I don't think you're going to get it here.
Yeah.
That's why you have a common driveway. It can be steeper.
Yep.
And now.
The radius is going to be much less, also. I think the common road is the way to go.
And a wastewater treatment system?
Makes sense, Bob.
So are we wasting our time talking about this? Okay. I'm not the engineer, I'm just saying, okay.
So I mean, so we would not want a town road. And I don't think it can be done because, as Dennis pointed out, I'll give you credit. Between the house and the, and the, the septic system, you can't have a town road.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yep. I have a PEE, but I like to spell that out.
That's right, okay.
Okay, so it stays a private loop? If, if it can, if it can work.
If it can work. So you could, you could look at that and.
But the other one is the shrinking.
Yeah, and the other one, shrinking and, and a cul-de-sac, look at that also. I mean, I, I think what we're trying to do is, I think we're comfortable, if members are, with, that we're convinced that this is a four lot deal, that we can do a four lot subdivision here, which I think is a first hurdle that we're done. And then we can move forward there to fine tune it and, and get it to something that you think is going to be good and marketable and we think is environmentally, you know, correct. I think when you come up with your matrix, no matter how you do it with these conservations subdivisions, it's going to be significantly better than the conventional. I mean, it's just a no brainer in terms of slopes, trees, you name it. Now, my understanding also, Bob, you want to speak about the septic? Because all those holes have got to be redone or retested or they're, they're different from what we looked at.
Yeah, I, I superposed all the test pits and percolation tests all that Ralph had done. Obviously, he probably knows this. I'm pretty sure it's quite, you're, a lot of the hole that you did don't line up with the location of the septic system as shown. So obviously, you have some work left for you to put it in these locations where you think the septic can go based on layout. So I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
Yeah, I, I'm aware and I'm not, I'm not honestly concerned about that. The whole area is bank run. It's, it's sandy, very, very sandy material.
Jeff had asked about, remember that one lot, if you were going to do some testing in, in terms of what might be in the soils? I don't know if we've done that.
Oh, phase one.
When we did the test pits, I mean, you had.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I did probably twenty-four to twenty-five, twenty-six test pits throughout the site. We didn't find anything odd or no construction debris, no, you know, no waste, nothing, nothing odd. I believe you also did a phase one.
Yeah, historically, there was nothing there.
You, you submitted something, you've got that, they kind of prior submission and like that, yeah.
I believe we submitted.
Okay.
Yeah, and there was nothing found.
Okay, good, okay.
There was nothing there, historically.
Bob, did you have any other comments that you wanted to bring up at this point?
Um, just comments with the stormwater basin out, or Ralph, you might want to add maintenance access to that and a bench, aquatic bench and a maintenance roadway around that. So that might be increasing some of your impacts to the possible steep slopes of trees. And I don't know how much sense it makes to talk about the last one that we just reviewed, but I think we should review the new one that comes in. But those are my main comments. And I'm going to hold off on doing a full blown review on the stormwater and the SWIP and the intersection site distances, the highway work, construction sequencing until they formulate better plans. But I think now that they have better direction from the planning board, I would imagine I'll do my formal comprehensive review on everything on the next medal.
Okay. Dennis, you have some thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I'm not going to say much about the conventional subdivision at this point. But, you know, again, to remind everyone that, you know, it's best, you know, as you're supposed to do with respect to the wetlands, you know, and the buffer. This is the environmental protection overlay district. So, so any impacts are going to be magnified in terms of what the mitigation requirements are going to be. The code says two to one, but typically for buffer, there's been, you know, passed action from the planning board, which was just a one and a half to one ratio. But, you know, again, my, my visits to this site, you know, mitigation has to be more than just like changing or transforming. It needs to be, you know, an improvement or an uplift of the system. And, you know, it is a pretty good environment, as, you know, Ralph pointed out. You're contiguous to Ripoll Park. You have a very nice metal community that's developed back there after, you know, all the years of, you know, you have the bank run gravel because history has removed all the other layers. And, you know, whatever has come in has done a great job. So, so those opportunities are limited. So to the point that you could avoid wetlands, I think, I, that's your best bet in my, in my opinion. So that's why I just jumped to the conservation subdivision. As I said, it is contiguous to Ripoll Park, so that makes a lot of sense. It would be seamless. Nature doesn't care about property lines and easements. They're just going to be able to take advantage.
Actually, Dennis, you, you bring up something that reminds me. When the overlay was first proposed, we looked at it very carefully in this kind of a district where the buffers were extended and were thought to be especially important because they were protecting slopes, slopes going down to the wetlands.
Right.
And those are the ones most susceptible to, to problems. So it's really, it's, it's, you know, we've seen some of those where you see a hundred and fifty overlay. It's like, I'm not quite sure why it is in this, in this particular place. But here, I think it's very clear why it's here. And it's here doing, performing a very important function, protecting those wetlands next to, contiguous to steep slopes.
Yeah, it's an interesting spot, actually. It's kind of nice. The only, the only comment that I had, you may have done this before, you know, prior to my coming onto the town, is that with respect to the conservation easement, I guess it's, you know, up to the board if, you know, the study of the stormwater basin and then maybe some of the other things that Bob Seolia just mentioned that would be required. If all of that is consistent with the objectives under, it looks like one thirteen dash twenty-three one B with respect to. uh with respect to um, you know, does any conservation easement lands or something like that, you know, can be be part of that designation. And also too, since it was uh run all the way uh to the roadway in that northernmost section, um is there contemplation to uh make that an area to facilitate public access since it is right to a to a roadway? So those are my only uh comments at that point. Um with respect to the to the trees, um obviously it it makes sense, you know, obvi- you're removing trees, yes, but in terms of what what the final numbers will be and, you know, what that uh layout will be and what the calculations and your replacement requirements uh are going to turn out to be, that obviously can wait until, you know, you're you're further along in the uh you know, planning and development of this. And basically, some of our complaints.
Great, great. Thank you, Dennis.
Just wanna make it clear, in the conservation subdivision, we do not intend to go into any of the buffers. So.
Right.
Right, that avoids the.
Right, right. The best mitigation.
That's it.
Great. Um uh so we will need from you, um I, you know, depending upon which or both of the kind of concepts that we're talking about tonight, I guess you need to prepare an E F for each or one. And then we've gotta take uh our action once the E F is filed. And so we can certainly consider that next time around. And then um obviously um the work that you'll need to do to satisfy, you know, Bob with the perk tests and and Dennis in terms of the the tree counts revised based on these changes. And we'll see um uh if you could do, if you if you do in fact uh propose two alternatives for the um conservation uh development. If you would prepare, you know, the comparative eas- you know, the the grid that you've got here, the matrix here, that would be very helpful.
Question, good, Netflix. Uh Sabrina, can you put that plan back up, the conservation plan?
Or?
Thank you.
Hang on two seconds. Hang on two seconds.
It's something I noticed and something that Dennis brought up, um the the fifth lot, just just called it, so is that a a lot open to the public? What 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 is that? I know it says conservation easement written across it, but is it, is it still private land? Or is it land that anybody could go from one twenty eight, cut across that to get to Wimbo, to get to the park?
I mean ordinarily, a conservation, ordinarily, the conservation easement is still owned by the applicant.
Okay.
It's just restricted into what the use can be. They still have, they still own it. But they, you know, but they can't clear cut it, they can't develop it, they can't, you know, utilize it.
You don't hike on it if you wanted to walk on it.
No.
No, okay, so it's so.
It's still a private property.
It's so, but so if people were to park on that driveway and go walk through there, they'd be trespassing.
Right.
Okay, so we're not going to encourage it by providing parking on the side of the road?
We're not, we're not, at this point, we're not making it a park and connecting it to the existing park as an access parking area.
Okay.
It's it's still part of the application.
So to use Dennis's terms, it's just wildlife and nature doesn't know that there's property lines there. Okay.
Got it.
Yep, it's open space. Now, what we have done in s- in some cases, in speaking with applicants, not so much, you know, parking and all that kind of stuff.
Just take a trail.
Exactly, we've we, you know, there was a great movement uh in the nineties and the early two thousands to set up this whole connective trail system throughout the town. And it was just for hiking and no parking out there, but maybe just to connect, and since this is contiguous to a park, it it could be interesting, I suppose, for someone to walk through the park and walk out to one twenty eight, uh you know, I I have no idea. But uh uh properties have done that in the past, uh we were a little bit uh more uh aggressive with that uh back back in the day. Uh Steve Coleman was really heading that up and and we we followed his lead and and I think there was even a trail master plan that was set up. Um you know, for future parcels that might be, uh might have some sort of connectivity uh with these trails. Um but uh most of our, the town's now built out, so we don't have many trails going through the living rooms of uh folks at this point.
They'd have to go through the wetlands to get to the park.
Yeah, but the problem is the wetlands and then there's also insurance issues or liability issues.
Yeah, I I say, yeah, we we understand, we get that all the time and, I mean, Dennis loves walking through wetlands, so it's easy and.
Yeah, and yeah, it's just pedestrian trail, it's not imperative, but
No, no, Dennis loves walking through wetlands.
Right, I mean, there's obviously a whole host of other issues that ESQ next to me would know about, and I own, so you're absolutely right.
Um any questions or thoughts from other members?
That would be nice.
No, I'm good, I'm happy. You called it down to two.
Yeah.
Yep.
And um and it looks like it'll work better. And then to the other discussion, you know, over the course of time, maybe the, I don't know what's on the other side of the valley, but maybe that's a a place where animals and critters can maintain what they've had for centuries.
Yep. Yep, good. Anyone else? Did I miss anything else? Sabrina, did you have anything, any other thoughts?
Um yeah, I just wanna make sure that Ralph knows that he needs to submit the comparison uh between the two lot common driveway and the conservation subdivision.
Um yeah, just to make sure.
He needs to do new um coverage calculation worksheets and show um a coverage plan, Ralph, on that conservation subdivision, so that we can
Coverage calculation worksheets and show
determine whether or not you're accounting for that driveway properly. Many times consultants don't really understand how to do that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help you with that. Um and then the last thing is the uh F E A, the full environmental assessment form, so we can move forward with the lead agency determination.
So um anyway.
So we're going with asking for the two conservation plans as as a way to.
I I think we should, yeah. If 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 the board agrees, um I'm not so sure the applicant, I mean, they got some issues with the one with the shorter cul-de-sac because of some cut film. But um it, you know, um I'm sure there are ways that it can be accomplished. And um I think, I think either one is is going to be a good solution for you. And uh I personally think that will be better, but I'm not in the marketing business of real estate.
The only, the only issue, I I generally agree, but that would be preferable. The problem here is that the length of a frontage is such that the house, when you locate it in the middle or anywhere, all the houses are gonna be too close and there there's really no backyards, to speak of, they're gonna look, there was no privacy. And that that's kind of an issue. Here you have aligned backyards which are facing the meadow and then they're facing a park. So from that stance, we take advantage of, you know, the frontage.
Yep, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
So so that's that's what we always would have done.
Yeah, cuz the uh, but on the other hand, with the pie shaped, uh you know, lots flare flaring out,
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
you're gonna have a considerable backyard, uh for the two at the bottom, you're gonna have huge uh back roads, just like you have now, just at an angle.
Yeah, and that's another point.
Yeah.
Issues with the wetlands, the way they're located, they kind of shorten that, so it becomes a little bit more of a really narrow kind of area and then you have
Yeah.
So if you try to pie shape it, it end up with lots which are, houses are quite close, or you have to put houses far enough and then you have a long driveways.
Right.
Which is, but anyway, we we can look at it as a sketch.
True. Look at it and say, um and frankly, one of the things that we try to do in a conservation uh subdivision is get the houses close together. Very often, we've reduced, uh for example, two acre zoning down to quarter acre zoning to get the houses for, it's it's a cluster.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So we get them very close. I mean, you know, again, we'll work with you, we don't wanna post something on you that you don't wanna do or it's not marketable or not as marketable.
My issue here also is that uh septic wells.
I understand.
So I have separation distances from everybody, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's a novel problem, which is dramatic.
Yep, yep.
If it if it was sewer and water, it'd be easy.
Easy, it's easier, yep. Okay, good.
Yes.
And that rules out the quarter acre.
Uh yes, probably, probably. Yep.
Yeah.
Good, all right, very good. So we'll see you uh then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the last thing on our agenda is um the minutes. We have minutes from January twenty one. So um I'm not so sure we can adopt these, John. Because Stuart and Jeff are out.
Doesn't matter.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Did you speed read them?
I know.
I I just, I had some, I got confused.
I have a lot of questions, there were changes, but.
I was, I was confused on with the resolution, is this the resolution for really pizza bar in here?
So it is, um and I noticed that they were being put into the minutes in prior years, so I thought I'd start doing that now.
Well, they're they're always in the minutes, but we always take an excerpt out and then I think they're put back in, I think officially. I think that's what they do, or did.
The resolution is an excerpt, but like I noticed that they were put into the minutes, in the minute books, physically, like.
Physically.
Oh, in the minute, we keep, for the board's information, all of the minutes are kept in what's called a minute book. It's an official record in the town clerk's office going way back when, the very first planning board meeting.
I was not there.
Wow.
But when the, in the in the past, while it may not have been in your version of the minutes that you have approved, they were in the books where they were adopted.
So, John, we have this resolution. It's okay, can we still have alternate vote on that, even though they weren't here for the resolution when it was approved?
You can approve the minutes.
The minutes, that's not approving the resolution, that was already approved.
Right. So that's, again, it'd be excerpted out?
No.
Well, we already did that, we already approved it.
Yeah, you've approved the resolution. They're just approving the minutes.
You already approved that.
Okay. Which include, okay.
Which include the 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 text, yeah.
Okay.
But under the rules of order, you can approve minutes at a meeting you weren't at.
Okay, okay. Well, um I I have a couple of changes that I'll send to you. Again, nothing is, you know, major.
Okay.
Okay.
Ministerial, do you have any other, are there any major changes that you have, Greg?
I was unclear on what, on the on the Midas site. Did he say they were or were not crushing on site?
He said they were not.
They were not crushing, okay.
I think you asked that question. You were the one who asked it, right?
No, actually, Jeff did, okay. And he says here they would occur offsite. Okay, I just wanna clarify, make sure of that, that was too big of a one time.
Uh-huh.
And then we confirmed the bathroom, um and then there was a couple of times, okay. Yeah, there's just, there was, that conversation went back and forth so much, I wanted to make sure we had it.
Okay.
And when he said there'll be no crushing on site, that was too good to let that slip by.
Okay, good, okay. Anyone else, anything?
Nope.
If not, is there a motion to uh adopt the minutes as amended? Now, Jennifer, this could be your big moment.
A motion to amend as presented.
There you are. Okay, second?
I don't know.
She can't, cuz it's it it's a full board.
It, cuz it's a full board, okay.
So the five, five members can be okay.
Okay, okay.
You're in the books now. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, very good. Uh that's.